Everything you think that we have though.
Okay.
So that's how.
Good day my lady.
That's something that.
Okay.
And then I've got your lawyer reminder here just so I was doing stuff to.
Good topic to talk about when we're on our way down something they used to.
I called their number. I see you got me on it. I seen an email when I walked up here and she said she'd sent it on her. So she'd already made copies inside too. Oh, okay.
We already have copies. Yeah. College eyes but it's good.
Okay, no problem.
Back and forth.
One conversation about the oath, so I was reading some of it, I guess to administer the oath. You have to be a No Republic judge to let go for us. Yeah.
Okay.
Unless, I was in No Republic for like one year, but I haven't been one for a couple years. Yeah.
They swore the oath.
Yeah. I don't know when my stuff lasts but.
Okay.
Yeah, we just have to go.
We'll decide to go up to.
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, unless, I don't know if anybody from the staff other than Ian is a No Republic, they can be right, put you right. Okay. Yeah.
So Gabrielle stayed there and pictures.
Did you get minutes for us?
Yeah.
Yes.
I can even.
Cause we're supposed to read them before we can vote on all those people. We should have them in our records.
Oh, okay.
We all have a date, each one of us should have copies of them.
Well then that's fine, I can make a copy of them over there.
Yeah, yeah.
I would just cross through and turn it into a sheet.
Okay, okay. And I gave both of them the letters from Mike Reagan. Both of them a copy of.
Okay.
Took me about four of them to get it figured out after all this time.
Yeah, I've had more homework for this meeting than for any.
But you do run into a big room, diabetics.
You didn't buy them in Michigan, did you?
No, I didn't buy these in Michigan.
That's a good question. That's a great question.
Where are the gummy bears?
They're from Freedom Express. Just regular gummy bears, yeah.
Okay, as long as they're not from Michigan.
They might be. I don't know what Freedom Express is doing. I have no guarantees.
Thank you.
But I felt like if it's gonna rain like that, we need gummy bears, so. And I was still on time.
Mm-hmm. You're early, this is like the first time in months.
Oh yeah.
Better write this down.
I sent you a picture of where I was at.
It's a miracle.
Oh, that's a good idea, I got you on my phone.
Wow.
Happy could I do a rain.
Yes, it's still raining.
It is raining like a beast.
It is still raining.
It's not just raining.
Sorry, you kind of be watering front.
I walked out and left.
Yeah. Pretty soon you got it.
Well, you start that and I'm doing that scam.
I got rain now.
Oh.
Could be a different thing.
Yeah.
Not yet. They tried to take it out because it was making my shoulder really sore.
Yeah. I could look at it anyway.
My laptop is so.
Yeah.
I don't have a phone.
Oh, really?
I got a big one.
Okay.
Well, that's part of like.
Little Sam is sixty five.
Really?
Straight across.
Pretty far off.
Turned right and I got wet.
How many people?
Yeah, it tends to do that.
I went well, let's kick off.
Napped out.
Did you guys see the email that I sent about what was out of?
There's emails of you, I didn't get any email that you sent me in a little bit yesterday until five o'clock yesterday afternoon.
Oh, okay.
I don't know.
You sent it four hour, four came down.
Yeah, cause we had a benefit in.
This was like yesterday, maybe two weeks ago. Could've been yesterday or Monday. Oh, well, uh, there was an attorney and an Indian empress who called me and he said that he represents our own power. He was saying that they want to get out of the town's electricity, that they want to use R E M C. And so he was reaching out to me to try to start.
Really?
I don't even know.
Well, but I, I understand is that the, the state legislature made it work that you think you can't.
They can't do that. Can't do that. We would have to, we would have to sign off. We would have to sign off.
And then the, and the, in order to sign off, it's, they, that it would be five years of what the electric use has been and what they, what they, they, we, they, they would have to pay us five years of electric use in order to change over just to, they just start right now. But they, they, but five, they, they basically give us five u- years of future use.
Oh.
That they, in order to do it, but, but the thing is, yeah, we were going to, um, get some.
We'll get, I'll get him in touch with the employer.
Yeah, that they, and it's, we're, they, we're gonna incorporate the gravel pit down there. And it did, that's, and then they're gonna take in some R E M C down there and they just had one house on there and we had to pay five years. But then the, before that could happen, it's like the R E M C and Litzgo got a thing, built a path through saying that nobody could take, change the lines that they, that it was, it could not, it, we could not even buy them out anymore.
Oh, really?
That they, they gave, that it was become a immobile thing, gave the, the lines for.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Yeah, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wait for Ann to be out here.
Yeah, we're in, just a fuzz behind, there's been a lot of paperwork for her to go through.
Yeah. Check with Jay on that, Dave, he was involved in that.
Okay. The impa's lawyer will just take care of that.
Yeah.
So there's, there's laws against that, they can't do that, so.
Yeah.
We don't need to talk about that in front of the crowd here. Yeah, don't close that door.
We meet again.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna move to the approval of the minutes from June tenth and June eighth. Do you have those for us, Andy?
I do. So here is the June tenth.
There's this one, do we have the other one?
I do.
And here should be a list of everybody that's in the audience also.
Oh, okay. It's a new president, okay.
If the, the whole meeting presence were council members and if there was more than that here.
Right, right, and then I was gonna attach the.
So, they, they, that should be all listed in here.
Is, okay, cause I was using other, that is from other town, then they, they just got the councilman or the lawyer, so like that.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Everybody that's here.
Yeah, that and we need a new copy machine if this is what we're gonna start getting to.
Probably just needs cleaned.
Yeah, it needs something. Everybody had a chance to read through these?
Not yet.
There's a, just hearing a little bit. We get a minute. Does that have anything, there's a little here too, a minute thirty.
You got it?
Yeah.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, June tenth, two thousand twenty five, uh, minutes.
I'll second the motion.
I think we need to, there, there's need to be a correction made here that during that council meeting, we had discussed the rate increase of the fifty, the fifty-five percent to go within four installments rather than two and the water, wastewater to go in two installments. And that they, that is what we had discussed in our meeting, how it got changed for the, the, to do, they do a rate increase otherwise, but that is what was discussed during the meeting and anything else that was changed afterwards. But they, but that is they, but we were going to spread it out over two years for that fifty-five percent so people wouldn't have to be hit hard and the fifteen percent over the two six month period and then they, that they, we had discussed that and you did, and somehow that got changed when it came time for the ordinance. That they, the, the ordinance was wrote up different from what we had discussed in the meeting.
I remember being in two, I don't remember being in four, and I don't remember being in two years either, it was in one year, we were gonna do it in two, the next one's coming in January.
We've, we discussed. We did. And it did, but they, but that's what we had, that's what we had discussed in that meeting, not this. This is it, this is it, these, these minutes are wrong, that they, um, that it, and, um, that it's a.
What I recall from that, I know, uh, Baker Tilly came, they gave their presentation, they prepared the reports and then they talked about how they would recommend doing the increases and then based on that, the ordinances were prepared and then we published notice of those ordinances, we did the public hearing. The versions that were published for that both said, I believe it was two increases for both sewer and water.
But they, but that's not what, that, we had never discussed that to be, to make those changes during our meetings. That that was a change that was made in the, for, that they, we had, we had, we had discussed going along with Baker Tilly, they, of the spreading it out over two years to have it done by the January twenty seven, that they, rather than they having it all done this year, that they, on both of them, that we were gonna spread the, they, they spread the, the water rate increase of fifty-five percent and that, that, that is what we had discussed at the meeting and they, they, and then when we, when the, then when they came back the next month, that they, somehow, there was orders made from somewhere to change to be, to just two, two and two instead of four and two. That they.
What I recall was they made that recommendation on the increase, we scheduled the public hearing, we did the, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance about it
Yeah.
and then we did the public hearing. I remember at the public hearing, you were talking about how you thought it would be a good idea to do it, to spread it out beyond just two increases, but the council voted and they voted on the ordinance that we had.
We did not vote on that.
Yes, we did.
That when we came, when they, when they, you had already wrote up the ordinance.
Right.
That it did, and so, I, what I'd like to know is where you came up with the orders to write up an ordinance that they, where the council had not voted on and they say, and asked to, as, as a whole, to ask they, for a difference from the four to the two.
Yeah, that was something that had been discussed at meetings.
Not a day, not a day.
Discussed with Baker Tilly.
Not they, they, not at, not at the council meeting. Not then Baker Tilly was here.
Yes, sir.
And they, we had the reports and it did that, yeah. So I, I, I'm, I'm questioning is where you got your orders to change the, change it from the, from what we had discussed and asked you to write up an ordinance of the, of doing four and two rather than the two and two.
I was asked to do an ordinance that was consistent with what they recommended and that's what I did. I didn't follow anybody's orders.
And they, they, and they recommended they be, having it done by January, the, of twenty seven. That they, and they, we had, and we had discussed doing that in four increments to get there in the January of twenty seven.
Okay, I don't know what to tell you. I know that's what you wanted, that's not what was in the ordinances that were published, that's not what the council voted on, so.
Yeah, it did, I mean, that did, that, but that's what we had talked about here, not two and two or two and one, it doesn't even say that the increase of fifteen percent would be two, but the fifty-five percent we had talked about and that you, you gave, there was, and that, that is what we did. We had not voted on anything actually to, to, to go with the, anything other than that than what Baker Tilly had suggested to do the, to do it throughout the two year period. But they, but they, but, so I have the, that they, this needs corrections that they, that because we had asked for they, for an ordinance of, of four and two.
No, we didn't. I, I make a motion that we pass June tenth, two thousand twenty five minutes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No. That's negative on that, that day for my vote.
I've been to all these meetings and as far as I remember, this has only discussed two increments.
I know, I know, I understand that.
No, that day.
I know.
That is what is in my notes also.
Yep.
You talked about it, but we didn't go that direction.
I remember you saying something about four Keith, but what I have in my notes is what is agreed on as two.
That they, at the, at the next meeting, it was brought, the, the ordinance was brought to us.
Okay, we're, this topic, this topic is done, we're gonna stop arguing during a board meeting, do you understand? Thank you.
And we already changed. That they, that I have the right to, I have the right to talk.
Thank you. You don't have the right to interrupt a meeting.
I have the right to take, to, to, to bring up whatever I want.
You've had your right to speak your mind and you.
That's wrong, yes. That then I've, and I'm speaking my mind.
Okay, but you don't need to interrupt people in this, in this room here, so.
But I am not interrupting, you are.
I have a meeting to hold here, so we need to move forward.
That they, that they, all you do is run the meeting, you don't rule with the iron thumb that they, that it's, it's for the three of us to be, to have each of our say, we each have our, the right to say, we are each of the same level of power on here, we each have one say.
Yep.
So, and we, and what I, and what I say.
Let's not sit here and argue, we're not gonna sit and argue doing, you know you're being recorded, okay?
Yes.
Okay.
That they, and they, and what you're, what you're saying is wrong.
Excuse me.
The ordinance was voted on, what did the ordinance say?
The ordinance in the end was, it was wrote up different from what we, we had, what we'd asked for.
But what did the ordinance, I'm just wanna know, what did the ordinance say?
I don't. I don't agree that that's accurate. There were two different ordinances, there was one for water, there was one for sewer.
Correct, I have.
Both of them talk, they talk about the increases and then there's a, basically an appendix to both of them that gets really detailed on what the increases are gonna look like. And that was included in the poll of notice, that was in the ordinance that the, the council passed to support. So there's a lot that went into it, but everything was laid out in both of those ordinances.
But the ordinance stated it'd be two, two increases.
Yes, as far as I remember too.
Yeah.
So.
Yes, and I believe that is what you read last, uh, meeting.
Right, right.
So that's what was voted on, that's what was passed.
That's what was voted on, so I don't understand what is going on here. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the July eighth, two thousand twenty five minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ian, I'm gonna need copies of these, cause I'm signing mine and giving them to you, so later on I'll need copies of both of these, please.
Sure. Yeah, sure. Next one we're gonna have.
Okay, we're gonna move to clerk treasurer's business next.
Oh.
And we're gonna do approval of accounts payable, it's a little off on the schedule here.
Accounts payable.
Okay.
Okay. We're getting there and it's all new.
Okay.
So yes, that's your clerk, clerk treasurer business.
Accounts payable.
Yeah, okay, yes, okay, so for for the month of July ninth to the twelfth of August, we, um, have a total of account, um, payable to a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight point fifty-five.
I make a motion, we accept accounts payable vouchers as read.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have adjustments? We have.
I, it's.
Do you have the copies of the, the sixty-one oh four?
The sixty-one oh four, I.
The water was spun in interest?
I do not. I, Susan didn't give it to me, so.
Okay.
I do not have it, I'm sorry, but I.
Okay, so you don't have the water utility one either?
Yeah, she didn't give me any of the information, but she said she sent it to you guys, so.
Okay, well, this is all new for everybody, so everybody's learning their positions, um, so we're gonna have to move past that one there.
So I'm sorry.
She emailed it, she did email me. I think so, I think I will.
Um.
Probably didn't do clerk treasurer business.
I just had, it's messed up on this thing here, Keith, it had to be moved. The clerk treasurer is supposed to, the approval of accounts payable is under clerk treasurer, it's new for everybody here, so they're learning.
That's, that's always been, before clerk treasurer business and then clerk treasurer business comes after.
Okay, well, we're getting there.
If you look at the minutes you've had before, the agendas you've had before, it's always been
Okay, we're getting.
with clerk treasurer and then do, whatever she can, it brings up with adjustments or, or whatever.
Do you have any other clerk treasurer's business, Ann?
I do, I have adjustments.
Adjustments, okay, let's go ahead and do adjustments.
Sure, sounds good. Okay, so, um, some of the adjustments that we have are, uh, just for the water, um, just watering the, the garden, um, the hose left running, filling the pool, um, the mistakes that we made, um, on charging the, the residents, um, so here are the adjustments and the reasons. We could put it all in one, just because we're adjusted at different times, I'd like to use my idea of like.
Are these other adjustments?
Yes.
There's other.
Okay.
I don't know, that's just a billing one.
Billing, uh.
I make a motion that we, uh, adjust these billing adjustments here.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So we all have to sign these, don't we?
Yep.
Done.
We've done this a couple times. Did you read this one?
That I have seen, yeah.
You have seen this one, okay. I don't know where these are at.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinances and resolutions, um, Ian, you said you don't have the sixty-one oh four or the sixty-one oh one?
No, I never received a front.
Okay, so we're gonna have to, we'll have to save those for next, the next meeting, so those will be tabled, so the next one that's on the list here is a temporary loan for the wastewater, has everybody got a chance to read through this one here, this resolution?
Mm-hmm.
And this is gonna be resolution number nine, so how does that start with a date and then the?
Yeah, twenty twenty-five dash zero nine.
So twenty twenty-five dash zero nine, and what this is, so everybody knows, I know everybody hasn't got a chance to read this, um, with the finances the way they are at the moment, the uh, the wastewater um, has been running in the hole, um, as far as money-wise goes, so what we're gonna do here is we're gonna to take a loan from the electrical um, for a hundred thousand dollars, and it's gonna be paid back um, in annual twenty thousand dollar um, increments to pay it back to the electrical department, so basically what we're doing is we've got different bank accounts, and we're just gonna take the money from this one, we're gonna move it over to this one here, and then it will be paid back so that it goes back in there, the state board of accounts takes, and they watch that stuff, so um, we have to do it properly, um, and that's what this resolution right here is, is for a temporary loan between the Etna Green Electric Utility and the wastewater utility, um, and there has also been some uh, adjustments made, we're not in as bad as we were, um, there's, the, the billing was changed a little bit, so that now it's coming out of the water department and the wastewater department, previously it was all coming out of wastewater, um, so there was a little bit of a billing error there, so that has been gone back and fixed, um, so we're not ninety thousand dollars in the hole, I think now we're somewhere's around sixty, sixty-eight thousand um, is what that is, and as we, you know, once these uh, the adjustments that are being made and stuff like that or whatever, hopefully this will all work out and everything, so um, do you have any questions from anybody on this? Okay, I make a motion that we pass this resolution two thousand twenty-five dash oh nine uh, for the temporary loan between the electrical utility and the wastewater utility.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next thing we're gonna move on to is the Ashbury and the utility, did everybody get a chance to read through this Ashbury report for this month?
I gotta look at them, but not really reading through them.
Well, they don't, they should email it to you too, so you can read it before the meeting. Basically what needs to happen is here is we have this permit um, for the wastewater, and this needs to be signed, I looked at it earlier, I think I've gotta sign it in two different places here, um, so that we can move forward, Ashbury already applied for it, so I just gotta go through here and get these signatures on here, so I make a move, or I make a motion to move forward with the signing of the uh, the application for the wastewater permit.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. You got anything for me or Chris that I need to know about on this, since you've done more of these than?
This permit is for what?
What's that?
What is the permit for?
This is our annual, it's our permit, actually it might be more than annual, maybe a couple years, it's just a permit so that we can run a wastewater facility.
Okay. It's a pre-annual permit.
Okay. I'll pass that down to Ian. Okay, next we're gonna move on to fire and township business, is there anyone here to represent fire department?
Do you want me to talk about what we talked about?
You can go right ahead.
Okay.
If you're gonna represent fire department today, Amy?
I am representing the fire department today, 'cause one is exercising, the other is somewhere else, so, um, I've been requested to meet with Etna Green Fire uh, to discuss the tornado siren, and I was able to meet again with them today with MACOG, uh, MACOG has identified a couple of grants, which I am asking Anne for it to be the easier of grants, not something state or federal, so that we don't have to worry about any reporting, so you can work all these other things out, so, um, there is an, a grant identified for about fifty thousand dollars, the cost associated with the tornado siren would be forty thousand per the current uh, bid that was actually received estimate from J and K, I believe. So the next step was to discuss that here, to make sure that it would be okay for the town to be the applicant for that said grant, um, the siren would go on the building to replace the old siren, and doing that siren would then give the um, town of Etna Green the opportunity to be connected to the county system for EMA, in which the county is attempting to look at remote dispatch for setting off tornado sirens in emergency situations to assist the towns, and so they are doing that project separate, but did inform me that Etna Green would not be eligible to be a part of that due to the current age of the tornado siren, so.
Without upgrading to a new siren.
Without upgrading to the newest version, and so in order to do that, the town doesn't necessarily have the money to do that, so we are looking at grants. The only thing I need from the board today is just the approval to continue to research the grant, and then at some time when we're ready, so we're looking at whether we put the application in for this quarter, which would be September thirtieth submission date, and or the next. The suggestion was to do this quarter so that if there were any, 'cause a new, a new grant that's available, then if there's any challenges and we don't get it right, then they can come back to us, let us know, and then we could submit a second grant application by the fourth quarter in order to have the money, so that we could have the tornado siren by the next season of tornadoes, which would be the spring, that's the hope. So as long as you guys are in agreeance to that, then I can move forward with the-
Go ahead.
Got a question.
I make a, well, go ahead.
Because that's an Etna Township fire department?
The town is the, the town is the one who owns the building, and the, so that's a nuance related to how the grant process would work, is the town owns the building,
Yes.
Okay.
the structure is on the town's building, the only thing that Etna Green Township owns is everything inside of it, but not the building itself, that's a nuance.
Okay. I'm just thinking most of Etna Township goes north, can they hear that siren?
Well, that-
I know that Etna Township is looking at a separate, a separate, which is not my, my, my specific activity, but they, I, I did actually talk
Okay. System? Okay.
to the Etna Township trustee, board member, somebody, it was, oh my goodness gracious, I forgot to remember his, um.
Rita? Rita?
No.
John Muddy?
Tony.
Tony?
Tony Trabowski.
No, it was-
The other one, there's a third one, there it is, there.
Steve Seacrest?
Seacrest, Seacrest, Mr. Seacrest, why I couldn't remember that, I had a moment, I had too many of those in my head, um, but yeah, so Mr. Seacrest said that they are actually looking at doing something separate
Okay.
for the external side, this would just be for the town of Etna Green, and due to the fact, because a grant wants to know who owns the building,
Okay.
that's where it's the ownership issue, so the town of Etna Green would be the applicant, because that goes on the building that Etna Green owns.
Okay.
If we didn't, if we, my understanding is, if we didn't get a grant for this, it, we could not put it on our building, it would end up being out in the county somewhere, and we wouldn't have a fire siren that was remotely accessed and remotely started by county dispatch, and they, unless we could pay for it ourselves, so that's why we've asked to be, to start looking at grants, so they, for the town to pay for it, 'cause it was going to be that, okay, well, yeah, because it, okay, this is county, township property, well, it will go out in the township somewhere, and then we'd be SOL'd and still with our old, old system.
I think it addresses a, a major concern in that it ensures that the town residents, that they have access to be able to hear the emergency, which is EMA's specific um, desire, is that, you know, if, if the town of Etna Green cannot hear the siren, then that would be a problem, because that would mean all the residents of Etna Green wouldn't have the safety, that they just-
Also the timing of when the siren would go off, because somebody would have to come to the fire station to set it off, right now that's the way it is.
Yes, yes, so.
That uh, that uh, they'd have to get a call from the fire, from dispatch, then come up here and do it, which by that time the tornado could be hidden.
It's actually very terrifying, that somebody has to do that.
Who sets it off, local or county?
Current, for the um, other, for the, the, the new system, they're working on the details, so I actually got to meet with the gentleman, so Marshall County EMA is helping uh, the county EMA here.
'Cause a lot of times when they notify us of bad weather, it's already went through.
Yeah, yeah, right, so I think they're working out their system, they are working obviously, right now, right, so uh, Mar- poor Marshall County, Jack was the one that had to deal with all of the things that he had to deal with, so he's very um, skilled in understanding how to manage the tornado challenges, and so he is, and Marshall County I believe does that already, so he's working with KIP to get that put forward, so I don't know all the details, I just know that the intention is to ensure that the residents of Etna Green proper can actually hear the siren and are protected, so that, and there's a grant, and so it's
Okay.
technically, uh, they're looking to see if there's a match associated with that, so we'll get back with that, but I just need permission from the town board to-
I make a motion that we allow you to go ahead and move forward with this, and Dave, and see what you can come up with.
I second that motion, all in favor?
So I-
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll bring information back at the next town board meeting, so.
Okay, thank you, Amy. All right, we're gonna move on to attorney business, um, do you wanna do those in the order that they're on there, Nick, or do you wanna switch them?
No, that, that order's fine.
That order's fine, so we're gonna move on to the salary ordinance, do you wanna go ahead and take care of that part?
Yeah, so there should be a, an updated draft in your packet, this would be the salary ordinance for two thousand twenty-five, I presented this at the last meeting, there was a typo at the bottom, so I updated that typo, that's under section two, and then there were a couple other updates, um, to section one, section three, section five, and then uh, some of the dates were updated.
Yes. Did everybody have a chance to read this yet, or?
Yeah.
Hmm?
Okay, I make a motion that we approve uh, salary ordinance, two thousand twenty-five dash ten.
I'll second the motion.
Is it ten?
Yeah, it's ten, we just did nine was the other one, so this one will be ten.
Well, that was a resolution, that wasn't an ordinance, the, the resolutions are numbered different from ordinances.
Well, so this one's gonna be- And what's this one?
I don't know.
I would call this number nine then, that resolution, that, that number would need to be updated though.
That, okay, so I'm not-
Well, I got the order number for the other ones, that way I knew we started on it, but I don't have all these memories, so you're saying you wanna make this one nine then?
And you can even leave it blank for now, we could go back in the records and find out what it is.
All right. We will, right, yes, okay.
What's it, what you, why you leaving it?
We're leaving it blank, I just scribbled it out, so we don't make any more mistakes, this has been eight months in the making to make this thing happen, so. And it's about time to do the one for next year, so.
And once everybody's signed it, could you send me a signed copy through email?
Will do, sure.
Thank you.
Oh, and if the power goes out, me and Richard are gonna have to leave and fix it, so you guys will have to wait until we get back, so we can finish this meeting, so.
I ate all the gum and burped, so we have first snacks.
What's that?
I ate all the gum and burped, so we have first snacks.
All right, next thing we're gonna move on to is clerk treasurer's office, and I have this whole giant packet here, you guys have that other, do you wanna take and discuss this?
Yeah, so I can kinda give the council an overview, so you recall Patty submitted her resignation, Barb was appointed, uh, Barb served in the position, and then she submitted her resignation, normally when somebody submits a resignation, if they've been selected by a member of a local political party, that political party would be responsible for trying to find a replacement, so Barb submitted her resignation, Mike Reagan came to our meeting last month, he talked about the deadlines for people to submit things, and he's been attempting to fill that, I know at some point he communicated with Heath in writing, and he says that-
Yes, they all have a copy of it, everybody has here has, and if anybody wants to read it, I have another copy right here, um, as far as this one.
Yeah. Yeah, so he indicated the thirty day deadline for candidates to come forth to him with interest in the position, that had passed, I don't believe there was anybody who came forward to him, so then he said that it was now the responsibility of a council to fill that position, so there are a lot of different statutes that can come in play here, there are sections of the state constitution that can come in play here, um, the, in my opinion, the controlling one here would be three thirteen eleven twelve, and three thirteen eleven sixteen is a similar one to that, but that's essentially a state statute that talks about if somebody was a, a deputy in a, in a town office, and then there's a vacancy in that town office, the deputy can, can step forward, and they can take over the responsibilities for that office, so the council could proceed in that way, I know there's several years still remaining on that term from when Patty was reelected, so there is a lot of time there, um, but the council could proceed forward with that, um, there's some other statutes for specific reasons, I don't think they apply here, so there's a, kind of a lot of different stuff up in the air, um, but based on that, if the council wanted to move forward with Anne, the council could make a vote for her to take over the responsibility for that office.
What about the residency rules or the, um, uh, or the, um, candidacy of that, and voting and all those, the, the rules that Ra- Mike Reagan all had to follow by candidacy, um, the voting record, and they, they, and being of the same party, are those, those still we have to follow?
Yeah, so- There are a lot of rules that apply in the caucus situation when Reagan is trying to fill it, um, but when he bows out and he says that the county is not able to fill it, then it goes over to like a new set of rules for the town council to follow, the residency, it is true, under the Indiana constitution, there's a clause in there that says for people who are in town positions, they're supposed to be residents of the town, but there are statutes that have been passed that talk about circumstances where you can have somebody filling the town office even though they don't reside in the town, so there's an attorney with the secretary of state's office who specializes in election law, and I've talked to him about it, and his opinion essentially is that because Anne was the deputy clerk, um, she's permitted to, to move up and be elevated to the clerk treasurer's office, even though she doesn't reside within the town.
Okay, okay.
And I would, I would concur with that opinion.
Okay, and no other rules apply of the, of the um, voting or the, or um, like the candidacy of the, the candidate of uh, certain, Democrat or Republican or?
No, I'm, I'm- No, I think those would all be things that would apply for the county, if it's a Republican Party who's trying to fill a replacement.
Yeah, that did, it did, and I just wanted to make sure that we did, we make sure we're following the right set of rules.
Right.
To say, like, I hadn't been able to get an answer on that, Dave, myself, that, that uh, okay, that uh, that makes a difference, okay.
I make a motion that we uh, move forward with making Anne England the new clerk treasurer.
I'll second that motion.
Are you wishing to take over as clerk treasurer, take the position?
Yes.
Okay, that, that, that's personally, hey, Dave, better vote again without asking him.
Keith, I've asked her this already.
Oh, that, 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 but that did.
I didn't spring it up.
Nobody, nobody's told me.
I know, but we can't call and talk to each other, so I've already asked her, I'm over here every day now, working with Anne and working with-
Well, now we have it in public meeting that Dave, that she's accepted that, and I'd be, I'll second that motion, or did you already?
Okay, yes, yes. She already did, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Yes, thank you.
She's got big, yeah, she's got a lot on her plate, and she's doing a lot, and it's, yeah, thank you very much. All right, so we're gonna move to new business now, are we- Alright, so we're gonna move to new business now. Or wait a minute, I have one other thing here. I need to make a, I was stuck on there. I need to ratify in the records in the minutes that Susan Laye or Susan from Valpo, as I call her, so that we don't mix up the two. Um, she would, well, she's, yeah, Susan from Valpo, that's what, Valpo Susan. Anyways, um, she was hired during Barb Wagner, while Barb Wagner was here. Um, and it was brought to my attention from Joe Thalmer to reach out to her, to hire her, to help us get through all of this, to make sure all the bills are paid, make sure everybody's salary is getting paid and everything else. Um, and so I signed the paperwork, me and Barb both signed the paperwork to to hire her. Um, this happened, like I said, during Barb's time when she was in here. We we never put it in front of the board. We never put it in the minutes, so I need to ratify this. Um, that Susan was hired um to be a trainee as far as clerk treasurer trainee. Um, and I, you know, I've been working with her every day too on all this different stuff that we're trying to take care of. Um, and she, so she's gonna be available to us um un- until we have all of our training done here and stuff, so um and so this could be anywhere from three to six months is what we're we're looking at um as far as having Valpo Susan with us um to take care of all the books. Um, she's very good with state board of accounts stuff. Um, she's found a lot of stuff that we've been doing that were.
Incorrectly.
The incorrectly, yeah, that's the right word. So um state board of accounts is coming in. Um, they are gonna be here in September and they're not very happy about some things, but Susan's working with them and getting everything ready for them. But um I just need to make sure that we ratify this, that this was done in an emergency situation. Um, to make sure that we had a clerk treasurer in here to take care of stuff or clerk treasurer training, so.
Barb be, Barb is the one that hired her. If they, then there is a separation between clerk treasurer business and the and town business.
I had to sign the paperwork too, Keith.
That they, that that it's, if if Barb was a, the, if it was done during Barb's time and Barb signed it, then he, then there's, then there was nothing for us to do that we gave, we cannot, from my understanding, we can't, we can't encroach on town ga- town clerk business.
I'm just making sure that we have it in the minutes.
On how she does things. She's already been hired by a town clerk.
I had, I had to sign the paperwork, cause it's a contract. She's not, it it was a contract. It's not necessarily a position.
But she's with the, but the, but she was contracted by the town clerk.
But I had to sign, I.
That's not, not by the town council, that that, and we gave, we cannot infringe on town clerk business.
Okay, I signed the paperwork, therefore we are gonna put this in the minutes to make sure that I am covered because I had to sign the paperwork in order to start her contract. Okay? Thank you. Alright, let's move on to uh new business. Sorry, everybody, about all this tonight. Um, Jordan, we have Jordan here from Surf. It's your moment.
Alright, is there any specific place you want me to stand, or is this fine here?
You can come stand up here. You can stand back there.
We'll come back, we'll come up here.
And go to close to the door if you want.
I'll go to the same place that maybe was over here.
Alright, well, thank you guys for having me. This is really just a surf, kind of as an update, uh more than anything. First of all, my name is uh Jordan the Bullsworth. Work for Surf Internet. I am conservative market manager, uh which covers a lot of things. It can be community engagement, uh government affairs. Uh, this time of the year, it's a, we're in a very high season for events and things of that, external events, different areas, so wearing a little bit of different hat this time of year, uh but that can change from year to year, you know, uh month to month, I should say. Really, uh just to kinda give you guys an update of how many really sites in um homes and businesses we have covered is two hundred and thirty eight. That hasn't changed much. We've been here for three and a half years, but just wanted to make sure that it's known if there's some, you know, if we need to expand into certain areas or you guys think we missed certain areas, we can always take another look at those for you and uh try to get you set up. You guys have been great partners with us so far, so we just wanna return the favor. Uh, and there was a little bit of issue, I think, with the account here and some um technical issues. Do you know if those have gotten resolved?
We've had all kinds of little things, so I don't know that we wanna go into that discussion during this meeting. We've had a lot of stuff with phone lines and we've got phone lines that go out to some of our equipment. That stuff hasn't been working right, so we've got, we've got a lot of different phone lines and stuff and it's things that we are working on very slowly to get that stuff corrected.
Okay. Appreciate that.
But the more help you can, yeah, I mean, if you're gonna bring us new routers and all that stuff, we're we're all for it, so.
Yeah, absolutely, so. Okay, okay, so I'll leave my card and we'll, we'll just uh, we'll have a discussion a little bit later about that. Um, just wanted to make sure that you guys knew who I was and introduce myself, if you have any questions for me.
There we go, there we go. Go ahead.
Perfect.
My home phone that number has not worked forever. If the phone is there, there's no dial tone.
Okay. There's no issue or no dial tone with that, okay. I'll take your information before we leave.
Mine didn't need it, but I canceled it, so it doesn't matter.
Didn't matter, you said it. Um, probably you could, we probably need to do a reset on the backend or something that's causing that issue, so. I'll get your information before I leave.
I understand reset, believe me, I've done that a lot.
Jordan, I know that one of the help projects was to provide uh wifi to the community building, right? Did that get done?
Yeah, I think so.
Did that get done?
I'm I'm not aware, but I could check on that.
Did, did it get fixed? I mean, I thought we were back there and we had our IT guy here and you guys were working together on all that back there?
I, I wasn't here for that.
You weren't here for that part, okay.
Yeah, cause it was, Phil was on the advancing e-connectivity and one of the projects for Edna Green was to, and the Surf had said that they would provide at no cost to the community was uh wireless internet at the community building over there.
Oh, that one up there, okay. Richard, has anything happened up there that you know about that building?
That one up there.
Not that I know of.
Okay, so there's one to put on your list.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause that would be something that, cause that was brought up in that conversation with Scott Franco.
Okay.
And he said he was looking into it, but I don't know.
Where it, where it went.
Where it went.
We'll find out, yeah.
Blake, do you got a question back there?
No, I have.
Okay.
It's new business.
Okay. Okay. Um.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for.
Thank you, guys, Jordan.
Alright, the next one we have in new business here um is we have a quote from M L Johnson. Um, this is a, the flow meter out at Winona Corp for the wastewater. So we've updated the incoming water out there so that we've got that adjusted so that we can take care of the incoming water um at Winona Corp. Now, this one here is the outgoing water at Winona Corp. So Winona goes through a process and they they clean the water and then they discharge it, so we don't charge them for sewer on that. So this meter here needs to be replaced so that we know that we're doing this accurately. And so this meter here is two thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. And then there is another encoder that goes along with this. This is the part that snaps on to this meter. That is another six hundred and forty six dollars and eighty six cents. So I just wanna put this in front of the council. I want everybody to know about it. And I wanna make a motion uh that we uh go ahead and purchase this equipment so that we can update this equipment out at Winona.
We updated the, the the inflow meter with the, and come to find out that we spent five thousand dollars on a new meter that only needed like a five dollar battery. That I was just wondering, are we, I I was just wondering, are we going to end up the, doing the same thing with this of the, of the, doing a major overhaul?
That is incorrect.
And they, and not they, and.
The the meter that was replaced couldn't be, there's no change in the battery and I don't know who told you that.
No, that is incorrect, Kate. The battery on that uh in that water meter at Winona, non-replaceable. Once it was done, it's done. You cannot replace that battery. The whole piece has to be replaced. That is what I did. That is why I did, and I did do research on trying to get that battery replaced, and I found out that it could not be replaced. That is why we spent the money to put the new water meter in place.
And Richard changed it, so.
Yes.
So. And this one here, same thing. Richard's been doing the research on this to take and find this, cause this was a hard one to find.
Yes.
Because there are solids in this. So it's not a regular basic water meter. This actually has particulates in it that are clean that can be discharged. This water's discharged into the pond out there behind um Winona Corp and behind uh kitchens to go. There's a pond back there. You can see it from thirty. And after they reclaim, after they run this water through this process, it's dumped into that pond. And I'm pretty sure this is one of them ponds that's gotta have fish in it and they gotta check it and make sure they don't kill their own fish and all that kinda stuff, so. Um, we've got some big billing discrepancies that I don't think it is, um, I guess it is public knowledge, but I'm not gonna talk about it in this meeting as far as Winona Corp's uh billing situation, but there's some big discrepancies in the amount of money um that these bills are for out there. If you start looking at years past as to what you look at right now, and I think that we need to replace this um so that we can get accurate readings and make sure that um everybody's paying for the the water they're getting and the sewer that we're processing and everything else.
Well, this is the, I thought you said this is what goes out to their pond, that that's, that's totally their internal. So why are we buying a meter for the, for their, eh, they, their um, their system that they put in that they had to
Okay, so let me, let me.
cut down on our, of what comes to our plant, that they, that that's all on their end. That we should, we should not be paying for, they they foot in the bill for their equipment, that that's been, been they, from the beginning. That they, that when they have.
This is the same, this is the same meter that Andy Cook used to go out there and read every month so that we can make accurate readings. So we have a meter coming into the building, okay, that shows how much water they use, okay?
Yeah.
So then we have this one going out, which shows how much they process and they clean. So we have to subtract this from the other one, and then the the number that is left is what we bill them for sewage.
Okay, it's not just, it's not just, okay, that's.
And there's, there's, and the discrepancies that I have seen on the books are, will blow your mind on what has changed over the past four years and what they are being billed. And any customer out here is not gonna take and call in and say, hey, you used to charge me two hundred dollars a month for my water and now you don't charge me anything. They're not gonna call in and say anything. They're just gonna keep running on going. It's great. Because it's a lot cheaper and that's what has happened out there. So we're losing a lot of money. So this is a very cheap investment for us to make sure that we're getting accurate measurements on what we're charging them for the sewer. So I make a motion that we move forward and we purchase this equipment so that the ladies in the office can figure out how to bill everything properly.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opioid settlements. Did you guys get a chance to read these?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, these are both, it's opioid programs. Um, I don't think, from what I've, Susan told me, it's not a lot of money or whatever. Some of it's money you can use, some of it's money you can't. Um, this is just something so that we're supporting um these policies um that the state is doing and everything. All I need is, I just need you guys' approval, or we'll make a motion um for me to sign this paperwork over here on the computer. It's all digital. Um, so I just need you guys' approval for me to sign this paperwork.
Oh, we've always, in the past, they, they, they signed it off as, and forwarded, they forwarded to the fire department for their use and and they, and the opioid, that they, they were better situated with training. They can help fund them and training and all. And I would, I would like to see that continue, whatever money we get in, that they, to go, go ba- go back to, they go to the fire department for their use.
Okay, I can check into that. Like I said, all I know is that from what Susan has found is that we do this every year, so I just need approval so that we can sign this paperwork and we can continue to do what we've done, so I can request that that's what she does with the money.
As long as we go with that, I, I'll second that motion.
I didn't make the motion. You need to make the motion.
I make a motion. We accept this on the condition that it is, eh, is eh forked over to the fire department of all the funds from the opioid settlement.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you gonna make that note in? So you're gonna give Susan that and then I'll come over and sign the paperwork, cause it's digital, so. I just make sure you have that. That money gets donated to the fire department. I don't have a problem with that. Alright, the next one on here is this Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority Energy Assistance Program. Or I H C D A if everybody wants another thing to try and memorize. Um, this is a, from what I was told, read through all this, it's this program to help people with paying their bills and stuff like that. Same thing. I just need uh, I need the the council's approval so I can sign this paperwork.
This is so we can get funding to, to pay low income, or?
It's some program like that, yes. I'm not sure. I read through it and didn't understand it, so it's another one of these government programs to help the people.
Yeah.
Um, and Susan said she'll go through and fill out all this information, cause it's got all the content. I'm assuming that Patty must have done this before.
I make a motion we authorize Heath to sign this paper for um I H C D A.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have that note again? Okay, thank you. Okay, and I have one more on here. This is a Richard program. Alright, we've talked in. Um, we've talked before about the fact that we got kids messing with the generator up at the well building. Um, so we've talked about the fact that we need to put a fence around it. Um, Richard went ahead and me and Richard have been talking and we thought, well, let's get a price on what it costs to have somebody come in and do it. And then Richard priced all the materials at Menards. Um, if we put this on his to-do list, or it's gonna be mine and his to-do list of things to do. Um, Richard, where's the other one at?
Uh, what other one?
The one from the.
From Mike's fence?
Yes, or is it?
I'm not sure what happened with that one.
Is it in your office?
Uh, it's on my computer. The uh quote was.
What was the price?
Just a little over forty seven hundred dollars.
Okay, forty seven hundred dollars. Um, so we priced all this stuff at Menards and we got a total of seven hundred and fifty two dollars and sixty six cents. If we purchase the materials and we do it in-house. So I just wanted to bring this in front of the board and uh didn't know if the board wants to pay somebody to come put this fence in, or if the board wants Richard and I, and maybe Rick and Dave will help him with it too. They like these little projects.
I, I, that quote for the seven hundred dollars.
There's a couple things missing off of it.
There's a couple things missing off of it.
There's a couple things, but a comparison, we didn't get three quotes. I just wanna bring it in front of everybody. I mean, so we're probably looking at a thousand bucks, so.
That's exactly what I was wanting.
So we're, we're somewheres around there. Um, or we can pay somebody to come in. They said maybe September, November, get here and put the fence in around the generator. Um, so we're comparing apples to oranges here, and I just wanna give the council.
And that, that would be a thousand bucks also to have somebody come in?
Four thousand, four thousand, four thousand dollars, so. It's just chain link fence, yes. That's all it is. We're not gonna, we discussed it. We're not gonna put barbed wire around it, cause I mean, it's. We, we thought maybe, thought maybe some razor wire, but then, I don't know, we're not gonna do the razor wire, so.
And the, and the gate.
And the gate, yes. So, well, we're gonna have to get, yeah, there's a couple little pieces missing off of here, so I just need the council's approval so that we can move forward with purchasing this fence.
I, I make a motion we, we purchased fence at the, from Menards, was it?
Yep.
At the, at the, for a thousand dollars.
It'll be a total of roughly thirty four feet of fencing, nine foot uh sides and twenty one foot in length. With a four foot uh gate on one side.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, Richard, you got approval. You can go buy a fence and we got a project for you this fall.
Dave and I's bid for that will be the same as what we had for the walking trails Friday night, so.
Oh, you're way too much, yeah. Hey, you gotta quit quoting this stuff, Rick. You're just too high-priced. We can't afford you. But I will take your brother. He's gonna go help for free, so this is what's gonna happen, so.
Two Slim Jims and a bottle of beer.
Okay, I'll leave the beer and he'll get you the Slim Jims. We're, we're good, so, okay. Do we have any other new business or anything? This has been a big meeting. There's a lot of stuff. It's a lot of changes. Do you two have anything else to go with this new business or old business? The old business was missed off of this agenda, so if we have any old business we wanna talk about, we can go ahead and bring it up right now?
Not found.
Okay, okay. So we'll get that changed on next month's meeting. We'll get the old business back in our schedule here. Richard, employee comments? Do you have anything you wanna talk to anybody about?
Well, I would like to request that uh people quit posting on the Edna Green community page about problems
Right, well, that's.
that are happening in the park.
Right. Call the town.
Instead of calling me or the town hall.
Yes, yes. That's something that I think we need to push a little bit more is the actual Edna Green um Facebook page that is the actual official one. Um, so that's something that we need to work on a little bit here. Maybe put some signage up, or I, I don't know how we do it, so we can get, I don't think there's about eighty people on there or whatever, and it's not very active. But just so people know, but what Richard's talking about, yeah, somebody made a comment that slide was broke, while he was on vacation, so I got to go tape it off and yeah, we're. But just so people know, but what Richard's talking about, yeah, somebody made a comment, that slide was broke while he was on vacation, so I got to go tape it off, and yeah, we're. There, there's other ways to communicate with the community, um, Richard's phone number is right here, up on the door, up here, as far as if you need to call and talk to him, Richard will call me immediately, or he can call Anne immediately. If we have emergencies here in town, um, yeah, so that's not the place to uh, complain and, and get things fixed, so, I agree with you, Richard.
I, I would very much appreciate if people, if they have a problem with the town, with our town, it's not just my town or your town, it's our town. If there's a problem with our town, I carry my phone with me all the time, twenty-four seven, this phone is with me.
Okay, Richard. Okay, do we have anybody else here that's here tonight that wants to talk about anything, or have any, uh, anything else? Blake can put his hand up first, so.
Yeah, I didn't uh, I didn't, sorry, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this, Heath a little sooner. We're still kinda working on getting the power lines down on our lots down there, and last year in, in May, when I approached the area plant commission about building a building. They wanted to make sure we build a house too, so we had to give them the yes, sir, we're gonna, we'll get a permit this year to build a house, and we'll have the house completed by next year. That was what they wanted, we had to the end of this year to get a permit, the end of next year to get the house built, but apparently they sent me a letter saying that. They only gave me a year from the May meeting, but that wasn't what it was, but I don't wanna try to go argue with them about what they had said. I was just wondering if you guys, because we're still having a problem with the lines.
Right, right.
Give us a letter that we can take to them, asking them to extend our permits by eighteen months.
Nick, I, can you write him a letter, so that he has something to represent the town, as far as that we're trying to. He's signed all his legal documentation as far as for this power line thing, and now it's a Gulfstream thing, and Gulfstream is refusing to sign their paperwork. Um, for that variance and easement and, and everything else, and I understand, and.
We can't do anything.
I know, and I, I apologize, we've been go- I, we're trying.
No problem, we just need to do a letter saying, so I'll feel you guys, if we have extra time.
Right, right. Right. You wanna do it, or do you want to have Anne do it?
I don't mind doing it, I would just say, have a, have, put it in the form of a motion, if the council approves of that, I can write a, a simple letter.
Okay. Okay. I make a motion that uh, Nick is allowed to write a letter to county. Um, stating that it's not your fault as far as what is going on, you've done all your legal stuff, is, and we're waiting for one of the business, you know, as far as Gulfstream. To sign their legal paperwork, and to please grant you a two-year extension on your thing, we want your service, we already have your electrical and stuff, but we want you to put your new house in. Um, so you can be a part of the community and everything, so I make a motion, um, that yeah, Nick can write that letter? All in favor?
I'll second that motion.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, Amy's back. Oh, look at her!
Um, I have these letters, which I told Susie, yeah, I forgot about this.
This has been a big meeting.
I know, so we're gonna close out one grant, so we can open up the other one, so um, I'm, I'm getting this one done for you. I wrote all your thank you notes, because I know you're busy.
Mm-hmm.
Cause this makes your life easier, so all I need them to do is just sign, each one of these guys, to sign that, and then could you mail those?
Oh, sure.
For the town of Etna Green.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
So I just thought that would be easier for me to do them for you, cause I knew who it was, except for I forgot the young lady over there, and I recognize that, I will write you a, a love letter, if you want me to.
I'll, I'll.
Say thank you for letting us use your building. Um, the other thing is that I was asked, um, was, did everything get reimbursed, or did the information get sent for reimbursement to the K C C R B C? That was the one grant from the tourism commission.
Um, I was talking to Susan regarding that, and she said that it was taken care of, so, yeah.
All of that's taken care of, okay.
Okay, yes.
I know the invoice for the construction was paid, as far as, I signed off on that one, so I know that one was taken care of.
I knew that, but I wasn't sure if, if.
We, we could care of exactly, indeed.
I wasn't sure if Justin had gotten paid.
Yes, yeah, and she, when she left today, she said that.
That's been paid, and then you would just submit those to the auditor's office for reimbursement.
Did, yes. Right.
So that it basically should.
They should be, zeroed out, exactly, yes.
Uh, zeroed out, yeah, and then I did not know, because I did not receive the, uh, the letter from All Things Art. When I asked Susie Light, there's too many Susies in the world.
Etna Green Suzie, Valsall Suzie.
And then, and then Susie Light.
Warsaw Suzie.
Warsaw Suzie, that was the money that came, I don't know, I did not see anything on the application. Do you have a letter that came with the donation of a thousand dollars that says the grant per corp is due?
I, that I don't know about that, so, um.
Okay. I don't have that either, and she said if there was no letter, if you could find it, but otherwise, um, she did not know of anything, so if we did not receive recommendation to send some grant report, then.
I don't have a, I don't, yeah.
And you don't find something, I guess they can tell us that they need something.
Okay.
If you could just look to see if you could find a letter that would say, here's your approval of the one thousand dollars from All Things Art, which I'm assuming would have come. As like a grant letter to s- you know, to the town of Etna Green.
Okay, okay.
And then, um, I think that should close everything out. If we don't have to write any grant reports, if we received all the reimbursement from the county, um, and these thank you letters, then we should be good.
Good to go, okay.
Yeah, because Justin did let me know this weekend that he did um, seal that, you saw that, so that was his final um, act, was to seal that from the, from the element. So he is complete, can be paid if he has not been already paid, which I wasn't sure if he had done that or not, so.
Yeah, yeah, we s- we submit that, I, I know I talked to Susan about that, and Susan said that was, that she did that.
Okay. Okay, so then when all that's done, you should have like a fund that has no money in it.
Right, exactly.
Is there money in it, or it's a negative, then we should be concerned, otherwise it should be complete, and all it's gonna need to do is that.
It should have had a name on it, right.
Yeah.
And we'll close that one out.
And we'll pay another, yeah.
Um, and then as far as what um, related to the other thing that Heath is doing, um, you should know about on the four.
I'm supposed to know on the park project here, um, if we can get our paving started and get phase one of this going Thursday. There's supposed to be a meeting, and I'm supposed to find out if we can move forward with this, um, hoping that our other contractor didn't back out of the deal, so we're, yeah. Anyways, but um, hopefully, yeah, hopefully this park project is gonna take off, and hopefully I'm gonna find out Thursday, um, so that I can sign the paperwork and we can move forward, and uh, we'll have, have.
And then you'll connect her with Angie Summers, correct, or Jennifer, to know how the money will come in and all those things.
I've been dealing with Jennifer, yeah, so I'll have to get with Jennifer on how.
Just to make sure, like, I don't know what they will need from you.
Right. Right.
To be able to move that specific part forward.
Forward, okay.
So, and then the next thing that we'll have to do, you know, right now, but at some point in the near future is start working on the cap grant, which is the, um. Third phase of the park project, but it's, I can.
Yes.
We've got time.
Yeah.
We've got time, the only one that we have to push is the one that has to be done by May of next year.
Just so. Mm-hmm, cause we were smart enough to get the LOI in, so we don't have that deadline, but.
So. So we, well, we got an extension, that, yes, but we still, once the paving is done, then we can put in all the signs and all the benches and all the little amenities that go with it, so we'll be working on that stuff this winter.
And we have till twenty twenty-seven to apply for the cap grant.
For the cap grant, yes.
Yeah, but we'll have steps that need to happen before that, that Chris has been helping us with too.
Yes.
So, there we go.
Okay.
So, that's all. Oh, yes, sir.
I've still not been paid for that radio.
Okay.
I had gummy bears, but I got, I just got so, I was watching and I just ate all of them, so.
Okay, alright.
I ran into a situation, um, I'll make a long story short, it's with NIPSCO. My address used to be one seventeen Spring Street, it has been years and years ago, it was changed to one nineteen, same thing with where I grew up, it was two nineteen, that's two twenty-one. NIPSCO still shows it as one seventeen. I don't know who changed it or why it was changed, but NIPSCO doesn't know that, I mean, I resolved my situation with them. But my question would be, if, if there's an emergency and they're called out to one nineteen Spring Street, they don't show a one nineteen Spring Street. They show one, one seventeen, everything is shifted to.
Right, that's a.
Didn't they renumber the whole town?
Yes.
Like the early eighties or something like that?
But nobody knows who or why, I mean, those up here were talking to the girls, nobody knows who did it or why, why it was done.
Cause I used to be one ten, I'm twelve now.
Or when it was done, yeah. But NIPSCO doesn't reflect any of that, NIPSCO still has the old house numbers, so that could be an issue if they're sent out to an emergency thing, just so you guys are aware.
Right, right.
My, my house is still, it, with NIPSCO, service address is two twenty-five East Pleasant Street. Where the, where my mailing address, which actually is the physical address, is two twenty-six. But they, but with NIPSCO comes up, it's the same sort of thing, they're gonna be looking on the other side of the street, cause that's the odd number.
NIPSCO won't change it without you having something from the county recorder's office.
I don't think we're gonna get into that, I'm just, I'm just sort of glad we don't have EMS lanes and all this to deal with in Etna Green, cause if anybody's had to go up around the lake, you're gonna get lost, so.
No, I just want. I just want. I want you to be aware, because it could be intentional.
And I've, yeah, I've never been able to get that changed with NIPSCO, the, that, I apologize them on that.
Right, right.
I took care of my problem, so.
Okay, okay. Alright, does council have any other comments?
I have nothing else.
I would like to just say, I hope everyone's enjoying the new mural over here as much as I am, when we're in the downtown area.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Justin did such a great job.
Mm-hmm, it is, it's, yeah, it's a nice addition.
Yep.
I find myself looking at it every time I go through town.
Just make sure you stop.
It's nice.
In all three directions.
All three directions. Yeah, coming out of the park too, and that, that's a fourth.
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this meeting is over with.
Does anybody know who, who changed the house number or why?
The whole town was changed.
I remember, it was done years.